Welcome to the September 11, 2019, School Committee Meeting. Tristan for roll call. We are all here with the exception of Steve Bjork. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence in memory of the victims of 9/11.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item of business is approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes from August 28, 2019. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Yes.
What's wrong? My voice is too bad?
No.
Sure.
Just one correction noted, sorry. On the minutes, under Student Support Services Reorganization, it reads currently $20,000. That should be $20 million. One small modification.
One small. Just a little one.
One small. A little one.
Are we good, though?
Yes.
Okay. We have warrants G402, R203, L07, L08, L09, L10, L11, and FS01. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have payroll ending 9/11/19. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That's unanimous. Warrant CF03, CF04, CF05. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That's unanimous. And then we have sped 03. A motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? We have two extensions, Mrs. Newhouse and Mrs. Burns. Thank you. That brings us to item number four, introduction of new staff by Dr. Brand. That's you.
It is. Well, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Welcome to September and our second meeting of the year. An annual tradition that I have come to learn here in Wilmington is the opportunity to celebrate and to formally welcome those that have newly joined the Wilmington Public Schools. As you know, we've had many over the course of the last few months, which is not terribly unusual with various reasons for some of our staff moving on. One of the great things here in Wilmington I've come to learn is we have great longevity by many of our staff. And as we welcome a number of new folks at the beginning of the school year, we hope that they will be with us for many, many years to come. But we're excited about this opportunity. Not only is it a new start for the school year, but a new start to welcome the opportunity to form relationships and to welcome the new staff here. So we have a number of my administrative colleagues who are here this evening, who are going to take just a brief moment and introduce and say just a couple of brief words about each of those new folks that were able to be here tonight. We have many more that are unfortunately not able to be here this evening, but nevertheless, we again formally welcome them. So Tristan, there's not a particular order, or is there, that you'd prefer me to go?
The start of the high school.
Okay. So with that, Ms. Peters.
Thank you. We actually had four new staff, one of whom is here, Ashley LeBlanc. Ashley is a 2004 graduate of Wilmington High School and told me that her guidance counselor in high school inspired her to become a guidance counselor, so we are very happy to have her.
Thank you, Linda. We'll move backwards in order and the middle school. Mr. Phillips is unable to be here, but on his behalf this evening, it's my pleasure to introduce, I think we have two folks in the audience from the middle school. Is Amy here? Where's Amy? Hi, Amy. Amy Glavine. She's joined the Wilmington Middle School as a reading teacher this year, over 20 years of classroom experience from which she comes to us and brings a passion for literacy and a wealth of knowledge around instructional practice. She received her bachelor's of education from Westfield State and her master's in education from Fitchburg State. She has her SEI endorsement, has recently received her endorsement as a reading specialist. And so with that, we welcome Amy and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And also from the middle school, if I may, Elise Diorio. Elise is here, right beside her. She's welcome, Elise, and thank you for being here. She's joined the middle school as a mathematics strategies teacher this year. This is her sixth year of teaching math, and she brings a deep commitment to making math accessible to all students, but especially those who may have struggled along the way in the recent past. We look forward to her optimism and her empathy that came through the interview process, as I'm told, and certainly an important role as she seeks to build nurturing environments with our students. So welcome and thanks for being here tonight, Elise. Okay. Who would like to go next? Ms. McMenamin, thank you.
We actually have no new staff members at the North minus a long-term sub for maternity leave, but I am pinch-hitting for my counterpart, Mr. Dennis Shaw, and we are welcoming the following new staff members to the West Intermediate. And so we have right here Megan St. Dennis. She is our new school psychologist at the West. She is a nationally certified school psychologist, and she probably wins the prize of traveling the longest distance to come work for us. That is Utah, with several years' experience as a school psychologist there. She has her bachelor's and her master's in school psychology from Worcester State College, and she comes to us also from my former school, the Stoneham Central Middle School. So we have some common folks there. So congratulations and welcome aboard, Megan. Also joining us, a special connection, former student Catherine McKenna at the West. She is a special educator in the Stepping Stones Program. She has her bachelor's and her master's in elementary education and then in minor disabilities from Bridgewater State University. She has been a valuable substitute here in the Wilmington Public Schools during the school year and also during the extended year services, and she also has experience from the Dearborn Academy. And a special shout-out, she is a former field hockey and softball player here at Wilmington High School and also spent some years on the field at college.
Thank you very much. Let's move on, if we could, to Shawshene School. Ms. King, I see is here.
Hello. So I'm happy to introduce Mary Wagner. So Mary comes to us from the New England Center of Children where she worked with many students with disabilities, and she is our new teacher in our pathways program. And she comes with us with a lot of experience and energy and very excited to have her own classroom. So, welcome.
Ms. Sullivan.
We have welcomed a new administrative assistant to our team at the Wilburn Street School. She's here this evening, Michelle Bryan. Michelle is a resident of Wilmington. She has had many years of administrative assistant experience in various capacities, including time in the Middleton Public Schools. She is, as I said, a resident of Wilmington. She has three children in the system, one daughter in the middle school, two daughters in the high school. And she, right from the start of her interview, we could see her enthusiasm for being in her own town, giving back to the community where her children are being educated, and she has literally jumped in with both feet, starting on August 26, the day that the staff started, and has not missed a beat. So we're delighted to have her at the Wilburn Street School. Welcome, Michelle. Thank you.
Ms., do you want to go next? You do. All right. Ms. Bradley. Student Support Services, very eager.
I'm happy to welcome Jacqueline Dami. Jacqueline is a school psychologist based out of the Shawshene, Boutwell, as well as district-wide. She supports the office district-wide as well as with some of our added district students. She's a relatively new graduate, but does have years' experience at the Rentham Public Schools and then kind of was looking to get, I think, closer and transfer. And so we're very happy to have you.
Thank you.
And Ms. King. Thank you.
Hi. We have one new staff member at the Wildwood this year. It's Ms. Bella Galant. Bella is a graduate of UMass Amherst and taught at the Lowell Public Schools last year and is with us to have her first year in kindergarten, which is her dream job. So welcome.
And is Arlene here from the Boutwell? She's not. Okay. I'll pass on that. We were anticipating Arlene, and I was going to speak on behalf of Ms. Walsh, who could not be here. But so I think, did we cover everybody? I think we have everybody. So one of the things that is so pleasing to hear over the course of the last year is how many people who apply for the jobs that we post here in Wilmington, and it doesn't truly matter if it's a certified position or an assistant position of some sort. I'm always impressed when I have the opportunity to ask about how many people actually express their interest to work here. And I'm sure that there's lots of reasons for that. We want that to obviously continue, but I say that as well for those that are here this evening and for those that were not able to be here, certainly to take much pride in the fact that it's a competitive field out there, and here in Wilmington is no different. And so you're here for lots of good reasons that you clearly bring to the table. So we welcome you and wish you a great year ahead. Thanks very much.
Can we clap?
I'm sorry?
Can we clap?
Sure.
On behalf of the school committee, thank you very much for being here. Good luck this school year, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. However, you are free to go if you would like to. And I think there are, I think there was something outside where there were things and snacks outside, so please grab something on your way if you do decide to leave. Okay. But we'll be moving right ahead, if you want to stay, to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Two items, just very briefly to share with you this evening. First, food allergy. There are no specific attachments I should point out in your packet, just oral updates. Food allergy management. So one of the topics that has surfaced most, more recently rather, is continual efforts and opportunities, I guess I might say, for our school district to think carefully around our efforts to both prepare and plan for our accommodations for food allergies for students who have, who struggle with this, of course, in the district. There has been, I think, a fair degree of work, as I've come to learn over the past maybe three, four years, around establishing some sound protocols or procedures. I think it's one of those things, and I say opportunity, to revisit the work and to take the opportunity to ensure that our staff as a whole, whether they be seasoned staff or new folks like this coming into the district, are clear around how we best go about contending with students that are in our care each day. So some conversations have begun around this with a small subset, I'd say, of some of some parents. It seems clear to me that there is an important need of communication. So many of these things do boil down to communication around, you know, this is one of those things that maybe on an annual basis, we could improve. In fact, this afternoon at staff meetings across the district, our nursing, our nurses, along with principals, took a few moments to remind staff of the respective policies that are in place as it relates to our management of food allergies. It's also an opportunity, I think, to put together something that we could share annually with parents and families around everything from transportation, buses, to, you know, everything in between. What can a parent expect? What role do they play in concert with us? So something to be continued here. I don't, I do envision that I'll be back to you with a communication tool that I'll work with Ms. Crowe, our nurse leader, to put together that I think could be a vehicle that could be shared regularly. I'm thinking about the new family that moves to town that has no experience in how to deal with this, or how we rather deal with this. You know, something simple but important, and certainly this is, I know of great concern for those that struggle, and I put myself in that camp having dealt with food allergies for two of my children for the last 17 years, 15 years, sorry. High school gym floor update, a very different topic, but just briefly to provide you with an update, as I think you are aware, and no doubt many of the community are aware, the high school gym floor is being redone, resurfaced, I guess, if you will. And the town has worked and greatly supported this effort, and they've taken the lead on this with Mr. Hooper and Mr. Hull. Mr. Rogiri has certainly been a part of the conversations. But the construction, I guess, if you will, or that both the demolition and the removal of the old floor has already happened. The leveling of the floor, checking in with Mr. Hooper today and Ed Harrison, our interim athletic director. The leveling of the floor has now been complete. The subfloor is being laid down, I understand, as it goes, and the new floor will be laid out, laid out in pieces by the end of the week. So it's a big surface, as you know. It will take some time, and then there's the finishing and such. We're still anticipating this will be done by early to mid-October at the latest, but things are progressing well. And so the accommodations have been made for the volleyball team specifically, for athletics, that are playing out of the middle school, and thanks to Mr. Harrison, who's dealing with this, a little bit of a blip in getting the facility open. But it's well underway and it should hopefully improve the surface overall there once this work is done. And so that's it for the superintendent's report, unless you have any questions.
Questions? All right. So we have one item under old business, and that is the second reading of the school committee protocols. So I think you have a fresh copy in front. Mr. Ragsdale, do you want to just point to those changes that we made, and then we can discuss and hopefully have a vote?
All right. So after our discussion at the last meeting, there were just a few small changes that were made to the protocols. One was to the section discussing Robert's Rules of Order. So we've had some discussion about some additional language in the protocols that the committee decided to remove. And then in some additional discussion, we made another small change. So this is on the second page, under meetings, and the small change that was made in addition to what was discussed at the last meeting was simply removing the terms "by the chairperson" so that it now reads in a little simpler and shorter, "School committee meetings will be conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order," indicating that whoever is responsible for running the meeting, whether it's the chair or the vice chair, or in fact, of course, the members who are participating as part of the meeting are also equally responsible for following the rules that we agreed to conduct our business by. So there was that small change that was made. And then in the, there's a section, so the second sub-bullet that has to do with conducting themselves during meetings, so this is the second sub-bullet under the last bullet on the second page. Members recognize that there should be no surprises during meetings, and will send questions to the superintendent in advance so that the superintendent is prepared to respond. Actually, in this, I'll look at the most updated version, because I think we had made a small.
We did make a change.
Whenever possible. We'd made a small change in there that actually I'm not seeing in this current.
Yeah, this isn't.
In the one that was handed out. Because we made a change that said "whenever possible," just to indicate that essentially it's a good-faith effort to, you know, make sure that we get information to Dr. Brand when possible beforehand, but that, of course, questions that come up during the meeting or if there's not enough time to do that, yeah, it's understood. But that should actually be in here. So if we vote to approve these protocols.
We'll just make sure that that.
And so the language would be, if I can state it, and you can write it into the protocols to see how it reads, "Members recognize that there should be no surprises during meetings, and will send questions to the superintendent in advance whenever possible so that the superintendent is prepared to respond."
Okay. All right. I don't have a copy for us to sign anyhow tonight, so I think, oh, but now, does that have it in there? Can I just?
I have it in this. Oh, that's a different copy, sorry.
So it's the last bullet on that page, and then it's the second sub-bullet. Is it in there?
No.
Okay. So we won't sign this one, but we can, that's okay. We can still vote on it and then.
Yeah, actually, the original version of this in our, that was delivered in our packets as the language.
Did have it.
Has the "whenever possible" language. So if you refer back to that in.
So we can still vote, and then we'll leave it out at the Roman House. If you happen to be by this week, give it a sign, otherwise we'll bring it to the next meeting. Is it okay? All right. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns.
I'd like to make a motion to accept with the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Fenely? Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. And everybody who participated, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And then we are at new business. How am I doing? Oh, I'm doing very well on time. And that brings us to FY '21. I'm like, really? Draft budget calendar. Mr. Rogiri.
Thank you. In front of you, you have a draft calendar for the FY '21 budget development cycle, believe it or not, and we're getting ready for that. So it's very similar to what you've seen in prior years. Dates have been updated with various dates, the town manager's budget presentation, town meeting, and so forth. This information will be shared with principals, department heads in early October, so that's when we'll kind of start the process.
Questions? Mrs. Burns.
Mr. Rogiri, can you just please point out those meetings that school committee has traditionally have attended? I think there's, I think.
Yeah, the December 18th, right now, that's our preliminary budget presentation, superintendent's preliminary budget. The town manager's budget presentation is January 27th. There'll be a public hearing on the budget, we're planning, on February 12th. There's a meeting with the finance committee. It's sometime in March. We do not have a date yet. That usually gets set closer to the month of March. And then May 2nd is the town meeting at this.
Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion? Mr. Ragsdale?
I noticed that on the, in the November 7 list of meetings, that there's a meeting for Ms. Benishevitz for literacy. Is there an equivalent meeting for elementary STEM? I don't know if Dr. Regan is kind of handling that.
Yeah, that'll be, Dr. Regan will handle that.
Okay. That's what I was curious.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up again. Approval of student activity accounts for 1920.
In front of you, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommends a school committee approves student activity accounts, so you have a list of them. They're similar to what they were last year, but it's just each year, just the school committee to approve them. And we move forward.
Questions? Someone like to make the motion? Mrs. Burns?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that 2019, 2020 student activity accounts as listed.
Second? Mrs. Newhouse? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to summer professional development report. Dr. Regan.
Thank you. So I provided an outline of our major activities this summer. Most of our efforts were put towards curriculum work. I know there were some questions from the committee. I'll try and address those tonight. Sorry, I didn't put numbers of participants on here, it was something I just left off. I did talk with Allison Christine Murray over at Student Services, and all of the Student Support Services activities on here had unfortunately a low number of participants. So there was one that ran with just one, I think the maximum number. There was one, the trauma one ran with 25, so that was a big one, but the others are all in single digits. This is something that is not unique to Wilmington. We have been struggling to get folks to come to summertime PD. I've had these conversations in the last year with my counterparts in other area districts, and they're all sort of suffering the same thing, trying to come up with creative ways to offer PD at a time when teachers will take advantage of it. And they just feel like numbers are dwindling across the board. We thought perhaps with the early release, the share, because of no snow days, it might have been a little bit more attractive, but the numbers weren't that high. And they're not that off from what they were the previous summer. I went back and asked them to look at those numbers as well. So the professional development committee, of which I am, I guess, a co-chair with a WTA member, Lisa Federici, who teaches at the middle school, this is something that we will discuss after we get over the November PD Day, which is our focus right now. We have a full in-district professional development day scheduled for November that we're planning. That will focus all on social-emotional learning, behavioral health, just overall wellness. So this was something that teachers asked for more professional development on, so we're organizing that now with both in-house presenters and many outside guest speakers that are coming in to run sessions here. So once that's behind us, then we will start talking about this annual conundrum that we have about trying to run PD that perhaps happens in June that people aren't attending. So we've found that running them later in the summer is even worse because of vacations. So once you hit July, it's really, I mean, and I understand why. I mean, they're off with their families and whatnot. So we'll continue to look at that. The Jabalike group that I work with in the region, we do talk often about the potential to combine professional development, and there is one on trauma that we've been considering. It's a very expensive option, but if we join together, it may be something that we could do. So it is an ongoing conversation, but the challenge is, of course, finding a time that works for all of those districts and where you're not trying to provide sub-coverage, which can be a challenge. So it's, you know, it's a combination of those sorts of things. I didn't put on here, because I don't have an exact number on this, I can try and find out, but we do work closely with an organization called the Salem Collaborative out of Salem State. We are members here in Wilmington, and I just, sort of just speaking off the cuff, because I see the emails as they come in, I just don't have an exact number, but I know that there are dozens of teachers during the year that take advantage of those because of our membership. They can do these one-off PD sessions for as low as $75. They offer them professional development points. I just pushed out their latest listing today. I had a teacher immediately, "Are we members? You know, $75, that's great." Those are often offered on Saturdays, and teachers tend to take advantage of those during the year. I think they're in work mode, so taking a Saturday out of a week is not that daunting to them. So that's something else that we do, and for the next report, I can try and pull that data together to see if Salem Collaborative actually tracks that, because they register themselves. We don't, it doesn't go through us, they pay for it. So that's just something else that we do that's very successful. And then the Seem Collaborative is another organization that we belong to that provides professional development as well. But again, because it's separate, I don't exactly have that data on that, so I'll see if I can find that. And on the curriculum front, you can see that we had a lot of work that was identified last year, new courses that were developed, new materials, new assessments. So summertime is a great time of year for staff to do that, and I think that's in many ways more popular than the sort of more traditional PD because they can be more flexible with when they do that work. They're awarded, say, 12 hours to do something, and they can flex that time over the course of July and August. But it is a very productive time, and I'm in the process now of collecting the information from them, the work that they did, so we can then award them their credits, their in-service credits for their summer work. Take any questions?
Questions?
I said my comment. I noticed the Student Support Services session for PBIS, that was actually a full house. Every school had teams there, because I'm part of one of the teams.
Right.
So that one had a big turnout as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Burns?
I thank you for that, and I'm very much appreciated to the staff that came together to build upon the curriculum and to drive that. That's amazing work. I do, I know I was one of the persons to kind of ask what the participation was. I mean, we have, we had Wilmington U that was actually very, in its heyday, was very well-attended. They even had professional development in your PJs, and granted, not everything, I think, can be done remotely by video, but it's a good barometer for someone like myself that I've always found that knowing how many participants are there, similar questions, you know, in the sense, what works, what doesn't work? How can we get more PD in? It's, you know, and sometimes it devolves around the budgetary questions, because you want to make sure that the PD that's given, staff is interested in knowing. And I'm sure you do your surveys, you know, throughout the year and finding out what that looks like for staff. I think, can be done remotely by video, but it, it's a good barometer for someone like myself, that I've always found that knowing how many participants are there, similar questions, you know, in the sense, what works, what doesn't work, how can we get more PD in? It's, you know, and sometimes it devolves around the budgetary questions, because you want to make sure that the PD that's given, staff is interested in knowing. And I'm sure you, you do your surveys, you know, throughout the year and finding out what, what that looks like for staff. We've had so much around social emotional aspects and substance abuse disorders that, you know, that may be another line to be able to watch for in a classroom, be more kind of focused on that aspect. But I, I'm a great supporter of professional development. I don't know if our PDPs, if we're offering, you know, I don't know if, if there's enough to motivate people to do so, not to only better their own skill set within their classroom, but to be able to work towards those PDPs to meet, you know, to meet that protocol and criteria. But it, it's just discerning if professional, doing professional development. There's no one, no one benefiting from it.
I should have probably specified, because I know that there was a question about the WUs. That is actually alive and well.
Good.
There were no summer WUs offered. So this, this list is only for the summer. It was the end of June to August. So we had dozens of WUs offered. So I'd be happy to share the, you know, the broader view of what happened during the year, because there were, I mean, many, many teachers that took advantage of WU. So I try and be as supportive of those as possible. I just approved one today at the middle school. There's a staff group that likes to research literature so that they can, you know, expand upon what they're teaching kids in their classrooms. So this is a group, they pick like eight age-appropriate books for middle school students. They read them together, they study them, they come up with materials. So that's, that's the kind of WU work that's still going on that's not include, is not reflective here.
Thank you.
So it's good to hear that people still out in the community know what a WU is, and I should say it is alive and well. I can get you that information.
Could I also, also, I know that you've stated the resources that we have for our teachers in this realm. Has there any been reach out? Have we formed any collaborations at this point? I know you're still new in the district. There's a lot to be done here with regards to maybe other districts who host other, you know, working together with regards to professional development sharing, like if they have availability in, say Burlington High or Reading, that, you know, to kind of broadcast to our staff or anybody who may want to participate. Do we have those?
We do. So when, so when that happens, so the league is pretty well-gelled. The Assistant Superintendents or Curriculum Directors in this area, we meet in three different groups. I don't go to all of them, because meeting, it's almost every week. But when we do go, if, for example, Melrose has an opportunity, they'll give us the flyer and say, "We've got extra seats," and then I'll push that out to the staff. So anytime we can do that, we can, we do. And, you know, for us, we're hosting the November 5th PD Day. We're not opening that up to others, because it's hard enough to sort of organize something for 300 or 400 staff members, something large like that. But I know that there are times when we are offering programs if there are extra seats, and we have the ability to, we'll push it out to other staff as well. So there's a, there's a good collaboration that exists there.
Thank you very much.
Just, just sort of to clarify, I guess, I think it's a little bit about what Ms. Burns was saying, is about the PDPs that they get, like, and this is, maybe this is a general question that, that I need to know. Are there requirements for PD of teachers, and these fulfill those requirements aside from, like, as a, as a term of their, of their contract, for example, versus, you know, their own personal PDPs towards their certification?
So in, in this district, technology is a specific requirement. They have to have X number of hours in tech. We do offer in-service opportunities around that. That's some of the PJ and your PD and your PJs that they offer. Julie Kelly does a lot of those to help them do that. And then there are a certain number that they need to achieve every so many years to continue moving on the scale. If there's a WU offered, for example, most of the time, that's offered with what we call in-service credit. So that's sort of a Wilmington-based credit system that they can keep track of these activities and use them for licensure for their PDPs if they want. We don't track their PDPs, but their credits will then allow them to move over a column on the salary scale over, over time once they accrue. So that's, you know, I think that's one of the biggest incentives around the WUs, and that's why those are still alive and well, because it's a nice way internally to give teachers some, you know, training that they're interested in, but it's also motivating them, because it's helping them move along on the salary scale. Once they've maxed that out, there is the option for them to request a stipend payment, which is the standard rate, is $30 an hour, which some teachers do, do that as well. And that's also an incentive for teachers to do that.
Mr. Raxton?
Are those incentives available in the summer?
They are.
PD as well?
That's correct.
I have a question. When do, when does the list go out to teachers? Is there a signup? And if there aren't teachers who are interested, is it canceled? What does that process look like?
Yeah, it, it varies. So if it's during the school, well, if it's, so if it's for summer, it generally will come in chunks, like, so Student Services will send out a flyer, Technology will send out a flyer. And then there's a registration process through our Aspen Student Information Management System. They can go in, they can register for a class in there. And we sort of track that, and if there are no takers, then we would notify whoever the presenter is that we don't have anybody in your class, unfortunately, and it would be canceled. During the school year, it, it's a similar process, but it's just sort of rolling. Just anytime something gets added, you know, if it's a closed group, it's a group of teachers that are putting on a WU, and they, they know who the, you know, if it's eighth grade social studies, for example, that may not get publicized. But if it's something that's open to multiple buildings, multiple grade levels, multiple departments, then we push it out and advertise it and say, "It's in Aspen. You can log in and, and register."
I just have one more question. And I didn't send this ahead of time, so you can let me know next time. Do you happen?
Whenever possible.
Whenever possible. I'm taking, whenever possible. That, the sixth grade novel, they said, "The Donut Fix" is a new one. Do you know, do you happen to know what that was replacing? Was it replacing one, or are they just adding it?
I think it was an add, but I can find that out.
So I would just be curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Regan.
Thank you.
All right. 7D, School Start Time Committee. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. In your packet, there's a memo that, 7D, that is entitled "School Start Time Committee." And I do have, I have actually presentations for each of the next, my goodness, no, well, the next couple of presentations, anyway, including this one. So just a few slides to complement the memo that's in your packet. So you've heard me address this before, and certainly it wasn't just through my, excuse me, entry to the district, but through also the strategic planning in which some interest is, is out there around concerns, I think is the appropriate word, way to describe that of our current start times. And there are a number of views. I think it's very fair to say throughout the community that have honed in on this, and this is not necessarily entirely new, but has been building, I think, probably fair to say, over the last good number of years. And understandably, lots of other communities, as I think many people would, would know, have been talking about and, in fact, digging in and making changes to their start times as they go forward. Current start times at our secondary schools, so secondary meaning middle and high school, are considered by many as pretty early, and I would agree with that. Those start times, not unlike many other districts who haven't made a change, are, they really are out of step with what the research speaks to in terms of the impact of start time and that of the health and well-being of a young adolescent. And furthermore, in our context here with so many buildings, I use the term widespread of start and end times. And just to clarify by that, I mean, you know, from the, the start time from the very first school in the district to the actual start time of the last school in the district. It, you know, with eight buildings, it encompasses a widespread, and, and that can be problematic at different times in terms of whether it be transportation or just planning professional development. You know, when we have the CIT Days as, as an example, or the early release. And, you know, it's the last bullet here, probably deliberately so, but it's something to note, that we are, we are certainly aware of a number of other schools. I can't cite them all to you right, right this evening, but a number of other districts within the Middlesex Valley League, Middlesex League, that have made changes to their secondary start time. So, and I think that that's just noteworthy because of, as it does relate to athletics, and what could be, you know, a significant or growing gap in time from the time in which our students and student athletes are ending school here, unto which they actually get to compete and then get back home. So before you, in this memo in this evening, is, is a proposal. I would certainly suggest you consider this as my recommendation in terms of what the start time committee will look like. You know, it's an important piece to point out that this is a part of our strategic plan, which I'll talk more about a little bit later this evening. And it, it is, but it seemed to me to be important to separate this out specifically, because, for a couple of reasons. First, to get going with this work. The time is now, if we're going to do so. I'll show you the timeline in a second that I'm sort of mapped out. But I think it's very important for the community that, as, in your role as a school committee, you are closely connected to this work. And that includes my recommendation to you to actually approve a start time committee. And, you know, in general, maybe in general terms, take action to support the, the charge of the committee. And I, and I highlight that here and in the memo. I, I would suggest that there are really three prongs to the, to this committee's work. First off, research and education. It's probably fair to say, and from some of my own experience in other districts and watching and listening to the conversations that have unfolded in other districts, there's a whole lot of people that are, I think you could rightly say, pretty well-informed around what the research is speaking to and why this isn't even a point of conversation in school districts across the country. But it would be fair to also say there's an awful lot of people that aren't in tune with that. We've always had these start times. Why is this a point of conversation? Why is it even something we're talking about? So I think that there's an element here that's going to be important to frame this work around research and education, both the hard research, if you will, the science, but also what are other communities around us nearby or across the country doing, and what have they done as it relates to shifts in their start time? Communication and outreach. This is, this is a topic that I am going to predict, probably not with a lot of money needed, that it's going to garner a lot of interest and attention by community members. It tends to, and all of the other communities that I've heard or come to learn have dug into this work, and understandably so, because it has the potential to have ramifications. So really being thoughtful around communications, gathering information, feedback from the community is going to be an important piece of this work as it goes forward. And then scenario and option development. There are choices, there are options, many more than one might think. It's hard to tell right now, you know, in terms of what the, the various scenarios could be before, before our district and our community. The, the proposed start time for the committee and the composition here is laid out for you. And again, this is meant very much for your feedback. If you think that there's a group or entity that's missing, certainly welcome your feedback here. It's a large committee, and I'll, I'll point that out right now. I think, though, a couple of things. First off, I think it's really critical to have representation from all the different stakeholder groups. That's number one. Number two, and I really didn't maybe articulate this well for the last slide, but my, my thinking here is, is that this group that comes together will not necessarily meet as a large group all that often, but would actually be broken down and be doing the work associated with these three areas. And, and I, and I do have this template in my head. I'll say that, you know, from my work in my last district, that we, we did approach it in this way, and it worked very well. So you're taking a large group of whatever it might be, 30 people, and seeking volunteers, and, you know, it's one of those things where actually people do have a, they may have an interest in digging into the scenarios, not really care too much about the research. And you have a group of people that are really, would be passionate about that. So the proposal of the committee would, in fact, they would meet together on occasion. But in fact, the plan here would be to subdivide these, these members into the smaller groups and engage in the work. So high school students, I think it's critical. Certainly, we could talk about middle school students. Quite, that might be something you, you would suggest. Parents and guardians, I always think it's important to have representation from all three, elementary, middle and high. So you see that here. Similarly with staff. I thought two school committee members would be, would be appropriate. But again, that's something you might want to talk about. School building administrators, assistant principals or principals or such, central office leadership team members, athletic director, cares program coordinator. Transportation is not outlined here specifically as a member of the committee, but it's impossible to think about this work on the scenario development without incorporating, in our case, North Reading Transportation to help aid in sort of vetting and working through some scenarios. So that's the proposed committee that I, before you. And, and again, my, my hope is that you would take some action to approve this, because thinking ahead longer term, I think it's important that for the community member who's not tuned into this right now, as this unravels, they understand that you've weighed in on this, that you've, you know, you've had a say in some of the direction of this. Because this, again, this can have some significant ramifications, depending on where we go as a community for this. And so I wouldn't want any community member to think this has sort of just been done in a vacuum. I think that's an important piece. So the timeline, I talked a little bit about this when we, I think it was last year. So this is really a year-long process, but in fact, it's two years, as I see it. So we're here tonight, September 11th, and for this proposal or plan for you to consider. I spread it out, as I tend to do and think about these things, as sort of a first read, second read. I know this is not a policy, but I, you know, if you, if you will, to consider tonight, sort of a first read. But that on September 25th, we finalize what the committee looks like and, and the general charge to the committee. Right thereafter, I would embark upon the campaign to seek volunteers to serve on the committee and to make sure the community is aware of this work, where we're going with it, and so on. The week of October 23rd, if all would go as planned, and I'm, I'm going to guess that we would have, hopefully, quite a number of folks who might be interested in this, I would bring back to you the members of the committee. And then an update to the school committee. So these are all corresponding, of course, with your school committee meetings that have been established right now, February 26th. Final report, if all goes well, delivered in May. And then, you know, the expectation would be, there will be some, there'll be some scenarios, there'll be some options for us to consider. And some may have more ramifications than others. Some may have more, some may have a budgetary aspect that are essential to make them possible. So I think that it's going to, there's going to need to be some time, I'd suggest, for you as a governing body, to think about these, quite possibly to think about going back out to the community or going out to the community for feedback. So that's the timeframe built in there. Approximately, you know, June through to September, it could be June to October. But at some point, you know, you're going to have to make a decision, or those that are around this table are going to have to make a decision in terms of, are we going to make any changes in our adjustments to our, our school's start time schedule? That's number one. And then number two, of course, with that could come budgetary, budgetary aspect that will be necessary. And so it's with deliberacy that I suggest that you be taking some, making some decisions effectively a year from now to build into, dare I say it, the FY 22 budget. And then it would be in the fall of 2021, 22, in which any changes would go into effect. It's going to, not only is it the budgetary piece, but clearly people need to become aware of what, what the changes might be, because, again, some could be significant. So that's the timeline. And then a, a secondary aspect to this that is outlined in the memo, it's my recommendation that you consider embarking upon a review of our transportation policy. This is clearly connected to this work, but I think that this, in fact, in some respects, should be done more front, front-loaded, if you will. That's not to say that the committee won't come together and get started with their work. But I do think it's really going to be important that, you know, the, the policy that you have in place right now does speak to specific parameters around distance to school. And I think we need to, it hasn't, as I understand it from Mr. Reger, it hasn't been a policy that's been reviewed recently. And I would suggest that it's probably an important piece to do so, because before we go and ask North Reading or whomever to reroute things, those parameters are going to be really essential to build the scenarios around. And so I'm suggesting that, that you give consideration to maybe forming a sub, subcommittee or ad hoc committee, or whatever you, I'm not sure what you might want to call it, but for the specific purposes of looking at the transportation policy and, and putting some benchmarks or bookends, whatever you want to call it, around that policy. And that then can be, of course, a source of, the starting point around which the scenarios can take hold. So that's connected. And then, you know, again, finally, the recommendations that I would suggest, this all would, would, so it's for more for information, it's more than informational. I would hope that you'd consider approving the creation of the School Start Time Committee and the composition, or any additional members that you might wish to add. That's number one. And then number two, that aspect of the student transportation policy. So I know that's a lot, but with that... that I would suggest, this all would, so it's for more, it's more than informational. I would hope that you'd consider approving the creation of the school start time committee and the composition, or any additional members that you might wish to add. That's number one. And then number two, that aspect of the student transportation policy. So I know that's a lot, but with that, welcome any questions you might have.
Mr. Samaha?
Let me just start out with a comment that I really appreciate this. I think this is a very smart way to go about it. I think you're making, made sure to include lots of the different stakeholders. And that's, I think, really important, because like you said, I agree, it's going to have a huge impact on the community. I guess, my, well, one quick question is, you're asking us to approve this at the next meeting, on the 25th, September 25th. Is that correct?
Yes, with, certainly, you're more than welcome if you wish to take that action tonight, if you're comfortable with whoever was here. It was with the thought that you might have some suggestions on how to tweak or adjust things that then I could go back and incorporate in. But yes, ultimately, the 25th.
And I guess my other question, you listed several high school start times. Do you know which of those high schools, are these the times that they shifted to?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Recently? These are all shifts to these later times? They all switch from an earlier start to a later start?
Yes, that's my understanding. Yeah.
So this is going to be ambitious work, and I think it's appropriate that we need a sort of a more than a year timeframe to work on this, not just for the budgetary things that we might have to work with in the fall. But this is something that people are going to care about. I mean, if you consider that we, people cared an awful lot about relatively minor changes that we made to the school calendar, this is going to affect people on a regular daily basis in how they make their transportation and childcare arrangements. So there's going to be a lot of interest in this, a lot of concern. And it's important to ultimately get buy-in from our community on any plan that we put forth. And so that we really have to be deliberate and proceed with, you know, lots of public input and lots of communication. And so that everyone understands that this is not something that was just kind of pulled out of the hat, and we just think, oh, we think we should just change the school start times, that this was something that was gone into with a lot of consideration and we spent a lot of time looking, looking forward to. Because this is going to, it's easiest to focus on the secondary, on the middle school and the high school, because that's where the early start times are that we're sort of most concerned about. But in reality, embarking on a plan like this, this is looking at start times district-wide. I mean, because everything affects everything else, from as far as the transportation and the busing and traffic and so forth. So this is really just looking top to bottom at eight schools and how we're getting all the students there, at what time, and how all the pieces interact with each other. So this is going to be, going to be quite a project. And I think that we have an appropriate, at first glance, it seems like an awful long time to be working on something like this. But I think it's, we need, we need that amount of time. I also have a question about just sort of the operation of the committee and how you see it being led. So who is going to be driving the work of this committee in your mind as far as leading meetings or delegating assignments? How do you see that kind of happening in the way this committee is constructed?
Yeah, it's a great question, and thank you for it. So I go back to the three, back to the charge and the three sort of subcommittees, if you will, of it. So what I would envision is, you know, with the right people in place, right, anything can be accomplished. And so my hope and my anticipation is that we'll have somebody or perhaps a couple of people that would be willing to step forward and to sort of coordinate the work respectively of, let's say, the research and education group. So let's say, just for example, say there are maybe eight, nine people who are a part of that, that, you know, one or two people might be willing to step forward and sort of take a lead role. And then I would, I would meet with them, the leadership, if you will, of the subgroups to check in, plan, and come up with what seems to be an appropriate plan of action, you know. And so the one thing that I also have found in these kind of endeavors that I think works sometimes a little bit easier is, once you have that smaller group of people, they can meet around a schedule that works for their own schedules. You know, when you get large committees like this, sometimes that's really hard to have everyone available in the same afternoon at the same time. But if you, if you have these smaller groups, they have more flexibility in their ability to meet. So, you know, it's really, ultimately, I guess you could argue it's three committees that I'm calling one. It's probably fair to say. But I do think all of this comes together, certainly, as it relates to the outreach to the community going forward.
Sorry. Mr. Penneley?
So, thank you. I would echo the sentiments. I think it's a great first step, and I appreciate it. And the big question I had, I think, was very similar to what Mr. Rexel had to ask. But just taking a, like a big step back, because I have little kids, what time does the high school start? I feel like that's a question I should know the answer to while we're talking about this, and I have no idea what time the bell rings here.
Well, so we'll back, I think it's 7:20, there's a more, 7:20?
7:40.
7:40, sorry. I'm thinking of the middle school, the middle school, 7:20. So you have, you have, for sure, for the middle school, you have young kids who are at a bus stop at 6:30 or before. So, you know, 7:40 is, you know, in comparison to some other high schools, is actually, one might say, well, that's not too, too bad. And that's, but it's, it's still early. And certainly, but the middle school, you know, you've got, you've got young adolescents in sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who are, who are outside that building in some cases, out of currently, out of necessity, as I've led on some of the transportation, before seven o'clock. Yeah, so, thank you.
Mrs. Banks?
Thank you. Can I, it might be me, because the time of night, I kind of slow down. Can I get some clarity as to why we can't bring this forth tonight for approval?
You can. Certainly.
I, I think this is, if I can go on, this is a conversation that I know this board has touched upon for the past two, two and a half years in bits and pieces. I know there's been feedback on the outside from parents and such. I, in the way, what was presented this evening and being able to think about it over the weekend as it appeared in our packet, I can't see why, unless someone, I mean, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable, I wouldn't want to rush anybody into it. But I, I can't see a reason not to move forth this committee for approval, as well as the subcommittee to, and I believe it's a sub-separate committee from the policy committee to address the transportation policy. I would like to, I guess eager to kind of start the ball rolling as it pertains to this, because I know it's, it really has been, next to the homework policy, one of the top elements that parents are really, have been asking for and such. I, that's, that's where I stand. I would, I would like to make a motion to move ahead and approve the school start time committee with, along with the subcommittee for the specific purpose of reviewing the current student transportation policy.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any discussion?
Would approving the plan now rather than in two weeks, is that going to change much about this timeline as far as when we get started? Or when you plan?
I certainly, yeah, no, I certainly get, and so thank you. And I'll take it as a compliment, and you're comfortable with this, so that's good. And no, I would, there'd be no reason not to reach out sooner and get, and get things started perhaps a little bit sooner. I don't know that ultimately it would change it a whole lot. You know, we were going to go into the Columbus Day and so on. But certainly could get the word out and could provide more time to try and generate interest for those that might wish to serve. If I may, the only thing I might hope for, and maybe this is a follow-up, is that's great for the start time committee, that just maybe the clarity around who you might wish to serve on the subcommittee for the transportation policy review. I think equally, getting started with that is along the same lines as this larger body of work too. So I don't know if you want to do that tonight or not.
We haven't voted yet on this. So I think maybe we take this vote, and then we can talk about who we'd like to serve on the subcommittee.
Actually, I have one more slight question. And I don't know, because I know the, I'm just, I'm thinking as well about the, all the school building stuff too, and how that might impact the transportation and all of this as well. But I know that, my understanding is that all the building stuff is going to be moving at a pretty slow rate. I mean, if that's, if that's, if that's fair to say. But do you, how much impact do you envision having this transportation policy committee have on the school building stuff? Is there, is there going to be much impact there? I mean, if, if school buildings change, that's going to change transportation and stuff? Or is that, or is that, that would be the work of the transportation subcommittee?
I would, I think even though this is two years out, if this plan unfolds, as I'm suggesting, I can envision it could, I think that will be certainly leading any changes to facilities. And that when, and or if that, you know, were to happen, that there would be also plenty of time to have to respond or, or, yeah, to respond to the plan and make adjustments accordingly. So it's a great question. And there obviously is a nexus for transportation and buildings and how many we have. But I think that this work can certainly well get underway and would have to respond to any changes in our overall configuration of buildings.
And I have a question about the start time committee. Would that need to be, would those meetings need to be posted? Would there need to be minutes taken? Could we actually have research and education meet on their own without it having a posted meeting? I just would love some clarity.
It's also a great question. So I don't believe there's anything in your policy. So I'm not suggesting this would be an official subcommittee of the school committee. And so with that, I don't believe, I have no knowledge of a policy that would, by the mere presence of a school committee member, then dictate it to be a public, you know, bound by open meeting law. So the answer, I would say it's different. And certainly the subset of people can meet separately. So unless there is a policy that I'm not aware of, I don't think that there's an issue in that sense.
I don't believe there is a policy. And I think only when there's a quorum of school committee members, does it really truly become an official meeting, because you have a quorum. So I, you know, it's a superintendent-driven committee that has invited school committee to participate for obvious reason. But I would say obvious that, that the subcommittee working on the transportation policy would, would be an open meeting, which would be posted, because it is policy and it is the work of the school committee to drive that.
If I may, and sometimes some communities are, get a little, you know, terminology has meaning. Sometimes if this comes too close to school committee or policy subcommittee and its title, and you worry about that, and maybe it's a task force. I mean, it's just, they're just words. But if you think that cleans up any misconception around it, but I don't know that's necessary, but it's an option.
I just know that a policy, previously, when I served, that it would always be posted. And as you had brought up earlier in the meeting, we, we were working on the, I was on the policy committee when we were working in updating our food allergens within the classroom. And we did have, as you would imagine, parents participate in that, in that work, which was helpful in creating that policy as well. So just as a point of note, thank you. Mr. Rexel?
So when, so for the transportation, like as Ms. Burns said, the transportation subcommittee, if we're appointing our own members, then that's an official subcommittee of the school committee, which is subject to the open meetings law. But a committee appointed by the superintendent in advisory capacity is, is not subject to open meeting law. So that would not have to, would not have to be posted.
And so I guess would there be minutes taken that we could review? I guess part of, I'm wondering if there's a way to see, or would that just come to us at the very end?
No, I think that the, there would have to be some collection of information. Certainly the recommendation of a mid-year or mid, you know, midway kind of report and check-in. So I would ensure that each of the groups is collecting some kind of, some sort of tabulation of the work that they're doing, whether it be formal minutes, I'm not sure. But certainly something such that they know that their end result is, at least for research and education, certainly in the scenario and option development, is going to lead to a public document of some sort.
And to get back to Mr. Rexel's initial question, I, so I understand there'll be leaders in each of these categories, but you'll be leading?
Yes.
This group?
Yes.
Okay. Question, any other questions? Okay, so we had a motion and a second, and now we can vote on the two actions. Are you ready to vote? All in favor? It's unanimous. And now, do you want to talk about who might serve on the subcommittee for the transportation policy? Who's interested in doing that work? One more? Okay, thank you. Is that okay with everyone else? We have Mrs. Burns and Mr. Samaha serving on that subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then, do you want to talk about the school committee members for the start time committee slash task force now? Or do you want to wait, you know, people to think about that?
Certainly, folks can think about that, and if you'd like. And what I will do is, part of the outreach will include a few meetings that everyone would be a part of. And so I'll always try and do that. So that if people are interested in serving, they'll start with whether or not those meetings are something they can attend. So maybe you want to wait just to see what those look like. And if you're interested, you can let me know.
I think for the strategic planning committee, I think that just members that were interested in serving just were, can kind of let Tristan know and let Dr. Brand know. Probably do the same thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
School facility, school facilities planning?
Thank you. So there's not a, I don't have a PowerPoint for this next item, but item 7E, school facilities planning, there is a, there is an item in your packet and for members of the community who are maybe interested in this following online. This is really just meant to be a bit of background. There's no, this is informational only, not seeking any action from, from you at all on this. But regards, in regards to, sorry, school facilities. And certainly, there's an important meeting coming up on September 30th that will be, members of the committee here will hopefully be able to attend, as well as other town leaders. It's an important, you know, as much as the start time and is, you know, if there's some big areas of concern, certainly, this is another one, as it relates to lots of information that you all know well and have heard, and I came to learn and see firsthand in the district. And so it's important, it's important to start to think about where we're going here. And so there's a lot of information in here, and there's a lot of information to think about as it relates to different reports that have been done recently. Obviously, the town facilities master plan. My effort in providing this to you this evening, again, purely informational, hopefully in some degree, efforts to inform you and to get perhaps some prompt some thinking around where we might go. This is complex. We are obviously here in a great facility that's very new. The middle school is in, in good shape, not that, not that old, although coming up on 20 years. But the rest of our building stock, if you will, certainly is aged and has a number of different needs. And that's not only physical needs, boilers and such, but, but also educational space, right? Appropriate educational space for, you know, delivering education in these times. And so there's, there's lots to think about and a lot to consider in terms of trying to carve out the best way, best path forward. And, and, you know, more specifically, again, back to the strategic plan, for those around the table that were part of those conversations, and you can see it in the objectives and the initiatives, there's lots of areas of interest as it relates to this topic. More, more timely, as noted here, I see that there are two priorities for us as a district. One, to determine a path forward for the Wildwood School. Arguably, I think not just in my opinion, but that of the assessment that was done through the town facilities master plan. It is the school that is in most dire need of attention. And two, our student support services. I can appreciate that perhaps members from the community sort of tuning in might think this to be certainly farther afield than that of an entire school complex like the Wildwood. However, this is a big department that have very inappropriate space. It happens to be that they're in the Wildwood School. And, and it's an issue for us, because for the most part throughout all of our other schools, I would suggest to you that we are close to full. We don't have a vacant wing somewhere that we could think about repurposing for offices, say for the central office staff currently housed in the Roman central office staff currently housed in the Roman House or the student service, support services. We don't have that space. Uh, these folks, uh, you know, we, I feel very strongly with this. We owe it to them to have a much better space to work in. I don't know if there's an easy solution for this. I don't think there is, but I think there are options, but I would um, seek your support, uh, to work together to figure out something that we need, uh, for, for these folks far sooner than later. So, anyway, um, certainly, I don't know if you have other things you want to, um, discuss or, or ask of me. I will just make one note and that is, there's, I know some members have requested, uh, if possible, to obtain a copy of the two thousand eight report that I referenced in here. Um, I'll work with Tristan to figure out. It's a pretty extensive document, so, um, it's a public document. We just have to figure out how best to think about getting that to you, but, um, we're going to work on that, so.
Mrs. Burns?
Dr. Brand, could, would you be able to, I know that you listed a couple of different variety sort of examples as to how we could try to mitigate our current situation, um, especially as it relates to the department of our student support services. Is it possible to get a, a guesstimate of different options and what that could, how that could impact our school budget with regards to, would this be under the town budget, um, since in effect it would be a structure, uh, whether it be a rental or, um, you know, I, I'm not sure where that lies and I think I'd like to be interested in what the cost of that
Right.
monthly could look like, uh, amongst additional things. I know right now that, um, the student records are being housed in a, um,
A pod.
A pod, thank you. I was going to call it a trailer. A pod, which anytime one of them, uh, one of the, you know, staff needs it, they could be in there for about an hour and a half searching, um, for it, which is not conducive to the effectiveness of, um, how our, the workflows of our staff, um, in an office that is extremely busy to begin with, um, and constant. I'd be interested in that, A, and B, um, as it pertains to the facilities master plan, um, I know Wildwood is, you know, a, a, as we've discussed previously too, it's kind, is kind of the greatest concern. Um, I know in one of the, the plans that I think was voted on, um, it encompassed about including, uh, the Botwell to include the pre-K kindergarten into one building, which would be great with regards to, uh, transitional, you know, one transition, transportation piece. Would that be something that we would try to, um, put forth a grant together? Um, you know, if we were to, if this was to go through and we were able to, you know, in a perfect scenario, put forth a, uh, application to the MSBA to, uh, for funding something of that sort, would, would that be something that you've, and, and this is just hypothetical and I don't want to put you in a, um, an ownership type of seat, but would that be something that we'd be looking at? I mean, if we're gonna have to find, you know, it, it's going to come to a head eventually. So I, I just didn't know what your initial thoughts on it may be.
So, uh, I'll take those in order first. Um, so I, uh, it's not work that, you know, with just so close to getting school open and such for both Mr. Hooper and, and Mr. Rosario and, and myself, but we do, I think we do need to, not we do, we, we absolutely do need to explore what the scenarios could be for student services and whether that be uh, rental of commercial space, um, whether that be rental of modular space that we might be able to find, uh, location on one of our campuses. Those kind of things I think we need to think about and calculate with some cost. I'm not sure if they are. I just don't know if those would be factored into our operating budget of the towns. I don't know. Those are great questions, but, um, I, 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 those are the two sort of leading possibilities that come to mind. Whether or not that creates another opportunity to think about the Roman House, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for that. I, 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 you know, you, certainly you all know better in terms of the limitations of that space. That's not ideal space either, but it's managed, you know, it's manageable, but it, it's not ideal. So whether or not there's a, uh, synergy is not the word, but an opportunity to combine, I don't know. And I don't know what the appetite is for that, the student services and Roman House. Maybe it's something to think about, but, but I don't know. I, I don't know where that stands in terms of the operating budget that's necessary to continue to operate the Roman House going forward. Um, there's been some work done recently. I, I don't know what that looks like. So I do think we need to do that and I think that we can do that fairly quickly. That's far less complicated than the secondary piece.
Can I touch upon that while you, you brought that up? It's a great point that you raised. I know that in, what the current master's facility plan dictates was combining, um, the district with the town municipality, which, um, considering how we're growing and I only anticipated to do so with regards to how the social emotional piece within our programming, uh, goes through. That's another thing, I mean, with regards to, would be fiscally prudent, um, as a municipality to combine the school department along with the, the town municipal, uh, municipality. But again, you know, and that was where student support services came into the play. So that's another factor, you know, uh, do we talk about a new town hall and public, you know, uh, municipal building or, that, those are the things that I think, um, concern me too. Can we wait? I mean, we have to, can we wait? How far, how long can we wait when it pertains to things of that sort? Do we go with the original plan? And I, I think, um, I think sitting down with, you know, the town and, you know, the, uh, Fin, uh, FinCom, the fin- finance committee, I think those discussions should be had early stages, um, so that we have a plan of direction, so we know what to expect. I mean, education is only driving us in creating these classrooms that we've never had before, whether it be technology, you know, these learning environments, it's a part of what we need to follow under the DESE protocols and criteria and kind of, we don't want the kids caught in the middle of that, you know? So forgive me, I didn't mean to interrupt your thought process.
Um, that's okay. The, uh, the second portion, you know, in terms of where do we go? Well, I think that's the heart of the, uh, conversations that hopefully will start on the thirtieth and, and um, clearly this is something that as a body, you, you, um, you know, it's different if you are a regional district, you're not, and so the close connection with the other town leadership groups, um, obviously is going to be pretty important to navigate this. Certainly, uh, if you take just for, uh, a, a moment, the consideration of applying for the possible partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, uh, which, um, this town has certainly done so before, uh, for this very building, as I understand it, the high school. Uh, that is, um, an important process to consider. It's laborious in terms of the material to prepare, to submit, and it requires, uh, as I understand it, unless they change the rules, uh, the, um, the authorization from both the school committee in a, in a town as well as, I think it's the Fin, no, the Selectmen, I think it's the Selectmen, uh, to, to effectively be on the same page and take a vote to apply. So the question is, um, you know, what, what does that application look like and consider? Uh, as it relates to the master plan that the town recently completed, building consult, school building consolidation, not surprisingly to me at all, came out, um, with lots of interest and I think with our, can, our specific circumstances here, the number of buildings we have that are aged, the size of our population, which, you know, in comparison to the total building count of eight, we're not that big of a district. And, and so the idea of consolidating buildings, um, although I, I get it, there's certainly a community interest in the, in the, um, the longstanding connection with our individual schools, but, but that idea makes a whole lot of sense. Consolidating buildings, uh, for, 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 for the town and for the taxpayer base and, 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 and lots of other benefits, they're not getting into tonight. That makes a whole lot of sense. I think the tricky thing is, it has to be discussed and navigated carefully, is what that facility master plan calls for and how do we actually get there? Um, and what happens if part of that plan, as that does call for, is multiple buildings being consolidated? Um, does that have to all fall into the grant program? And if it does, there are logistical hurdles with that that don't make that quite possible. So there's a lot of things to work out. So I, I, I would, I think we have a lot of information bef- for you, before us. I just, I wonder if there's more information that has to, to surface as well to, to make an informed decision. So I'll stop there.
Mrs. Burns? Uh, looking for more information. I think it would be helpful because I believe on the most recent, uh, plan to consolidate the buildings, we were given somewhat estimates of what that would cost the town to create those buildings, but in the dire needs of, say, the Wildwood, can we wait that long? Cause that's a significant dollar amount that I think may be hard to get through, um, you know, so if we just show the town that one dollar amount without having the backup of, you know, what is all of the, um, what needs to be done to each and every building and what that cost would be as well. So you could compare, you know, if we were to stay status quo with eight buildings, what would that cost be? You know, would it be less and be something, you know, we would have to consider because it would be easier to, um, get done? Um, even though, you know, I think for the children, it would be a huge benefit to consolidate and have less transitions. Um, you know, I think it's easier on the kids with less transitions. Or would the costs be more to rehab these buildings than what it would be for us to rehab and add on to school so we could do the last transitions? Um, so there's dollar amounts there missing to be able to compare and to have all of the information of, to make, I think, an informed decision.
This is what you're recommending, Dr. Brand, here where it says to convene a working group of some composition to be determined to begin to examine alternatives to this, for the school facility in the near term future. Is that the kind of que- that's what that group would be doing?
I think so. I think that it certainly would be, uh, very important to do so. I can, uh, I know just from my own experience and other contexts, um, when it comes time to obviously require the support to go forward, which is the local taxpayers, having the clarity and insight around if we do nothing, what's it going to cost? Uh, versus if we explore this idea of building new or renovating and how much is that going to cost? And in the long term, what are the pros and cons or ad- that's the kind of level of detail that I think, at least I've seen in the past, is really necessary to get the full support when you need it. And, and because if you don't have it, then we're not, we're not going to go anywhere. And I think, you know, that I, I just might say the other thing with all of this is, um, I know it's, it's, it's difficult and, and for the community, average community member, it might be difficult to wrap your head around, what's the urgency? Well, you know, on the one hand, this is different from, you know, just renovating your home. Um, I would suggest that lots of folks might not plan five years out to talk about a renovation to their kitchen. Maybe they do, but, you know, uh, but the timeframe that we're talking about here to come up with a plan, we are talking about not something that's going to happen next year. It's going to be a long way out and we're talking multiple years with or without MSBA partnership. Um, and that's the sense of urgency that I think that collectively we should have in the prompt to try and get some, 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 some movement going at the town level because, um, it's, uh, anything that's going to impact our current situation is so many years out, it's hard to, to contemplate.
With visioning that is, you know, say at least five years before, um, anything's going to move forward. A, can the Wildwood sustain students that long? And B, seeing the student support services, I mean, I would think seeing that most recently should be moved sooner rather than later, given, you know, they've got files out in pods. There's a big, you know, to me, a confidentiality issue when you walk into the office because no one's in real offices. It's all cubicles and even those in offices don't have, you know, walls up to the ceiling. So, you know, all, they're dealing with so much confidential information, you know? What's the cost of getting them out sooner rather than later? Cause I don't think they can go another five years where they're at. Um, so what, you know, can we, can we envision this bigger plan of consolidating and limping along with the Wildwood for that many years?
I, I, I think, I think that, um, and I, I've, you know, Mr. Hooper and I have had these conversations and with Mr. Rosario as well too. I think, you know, that, that building, the Wildwood is, is certainly functioning and it's a healthy place right now for students and staff. Uh, there have been some, uh, questions around that, but, you know, as we, with the information we know right now before us, it, it's certainly a safe building. But how long can it hang on and then how long do those systems continue to, um, bump along? And if there's a system failure tomorrow and it can't be fixed, um, we would have to come up with a plan, right? And this happens to schools and communities all over the place. From time to time, it happens. So, so we certainly would. I think the larger pressing question is, how long is too long? When's, when's enough enough? And I, I don't, uh, right now before you, I don't have that answer, but I do think we need to start to think about, even, it, it would be an interim plan, but I think we need a plan, we need to be planning now.
Um, in, in the packet, I think I, I read that MSBA money is not available pre-K. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. It's only available for kindergarten buildings.
So even if, even with the Wildwood being, you know, having a pre-K program in it, like, that's, there's going to have to be non-MSBA money used as well. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, another question that I had, um, is there any reason for student support services? Is there a need for them to be in a school? Is there any, like, do?
No.
There's no reason for it?
No.
Um, this is, uh, definitely, as we've been discussing already at this long, um, tough to see like the clear way forward. There's so many moving pieces, uh, involved in this. But it seems, it seems pretty clear that we have to develop some kind of consensus in the town about moving forward with some kind of replacement for Wildwood. It's going to be, you know, years in the future to begin with, and so we need to start moving forward on something that involves replacing that school. Clearly, it makes no sense to be pushing money into that school to try and just kind of help it limp. And obviously we do have to help it limp along as long as we can. It has to be fit, uh, fit for habitation, but, but it's not something where we want to be investing our money in trying to keep that going where, you know, it's like that, it's not something that's going to be a long-term solution. There's probably not going to be in any, even in like the medium term, much more appetite for more than one actual new school building, if we're talking about like an actual just new construction building because the town has a lot of other building needs, um, and, you know, pushing, trying to, I think we can probably get one building up into the high priority, especially when we're focusing on the, the one that has the highest needs that we need to get rid of. But, um, you know, a lot of talk about pushing, pushing more than one ahead of like a senior center and the substation and, you know, town hall and public administration buildings. Um, so beyond that, we're probably looking at, uh, at, you know, expansion of other buildings if we're going to still follow the consolidation plan, which, uh, which I think, uh, makes sense. One thing that I think is worth considering is at this point, it's been a few years since the, sort of, of the, of the options that were put forward, since, uh, one of them was initially endorsed. And so that was, um, the, you know, consolidate, consolidate, so, you know, basically Batwell and Wildwood are closed, then we consolidate, uh, into, uh, you know, what, what is, I guess, it's like the three, four, five, and then we have the K two, still separating the two sides of town. But at this point, it probably makes sense to even just revisit that. Is that still, does that still make the most sense, knowing what we know now and looking at what our, you know, the fiscal situation is at this point? I mean, not just because it was like a different committee. It's not so much that like, oh, well, that was the old school committee that endorsed, endorsed that plan. It's more just like, that was a couple of years ago and we should probably, you know, take a look at the situation on the ground now. And I think that goes hand in hand with your desire to get more detail on like what the ongoing costs will be for sort of the current system if we just bring the schools along versus, you know, what, what are, what are these detailed costs if we really start looking at those options? Cause if we're going to get buy-in, we need to,
Right.
you know, make sure that we can show the town that it's like, no, that this is, this is trying to be responsible, um, with the town's money.
Can I, and, and if I could just add, I think, Mr. Rosario knows this plan better than I, that he's done a good job to educate me over, over the year, but, oh, one of the, um, potential problems or challenges with that consolid- the plan of consolidation in the last facilities plan is that it, it does require necessitates, right? Not just, uh, extensive work on one facility, but on two, right? The west, or sorry, four, I'm sorry, four. And so the, the, if, if, and, and the money and the dollars that were associated with that plan are now, you know, a number of years old and, you know, were they the right numbers, right into dollars there? So there's a, there's a sizable chunk of money that, as I understand it, is, is necessary to come to full fruition in order to make that plan happen. to come to full fruition in order to make that plan happen, and if that doesn't happen, then what, right? And so then what's our plan? If that was Plan A, if you will, then what's Plan B? And I, and I, I don't, in my opinion, I, I don't know that we have Plan B.
I think that's where it would be helpful to know what every building's needs are and what those costs would be, so, you know, if we can't renovate the four schools and I, I think we have rough estimates of what those were going to cost a couple of years ago, you know, what's Plan B and I think it would be helpful to have the needs for each and every building, what the cost of those would be, you know, so we can eat, better assess, you know, does it make sense to add on to four of our existing schools and take on that cost, or, you know, is that going to be pushed out too long and are, are needs better served in rehabbing, you know, say, one school and fixing up the other five schools that needed or four schools, whatever it is that. So I think if we have more of that information, I would hope we could come up with a Plan B if we can't add on to those four schools, but make it a little bit clearer at least.
Are you, are you suggesting we have that information for the 30th?
I don't know, I, I'd be shocked that it would be available for the 30th because I think that's a lot of work on probably the town to be able to pull all that together and, is I would think, you know, Mr. Hooper would have to, I'm sure he's got a list of what needs to happen, um, you know, is it cross-checked with the school department of what we feel the needs are for each building, because it may be a little bit different public buildings-wise versus, you know, academic-wise of what the true needs are for each building and then, you know, to go out and get estimated costs, I think that's going to take a little bit.
I think it's, I think you're absolutely right, we'll need to go in that direction and I go back to this working group, seems like that might be something that they're going to be tasked with, like, over the course of I'm not sure how long, but really digging deep into what are the costs, what needs to be fixed, so I think that it's, it's coming, but it'd be great if we could have that in time for the meetings. We could start quoting. I just would bring your attention back to the current priorities, so in preparation, um, when we were designing the agenda, I just felt it was, we felt it was really important to make sure that you felt well-informed about what was going to be discussed and to have a sense of what Dr. Brand was recommending or was thinking about as we went in there, so it doesn't turn into a lot of just, we could do it this way, we could do it that way, and so I would just encourage you to reread this, maybe even bring this copy with you on the 30th, just so that we can at least refer to it, not to say that there won't be great things that come up and other options and people discussing it, but I think that it was important to just have a sense of what's reasonable, what's, what can we actually do and be prepared for on the 30th? And then, wow. Mr., go ahead, Mr. Smaha.
Is there going to be some sort of packet agenda stuff for the, for the 30th?
It's not, it's not our meeting, but there will be an agenda, I don't, and I'll find out, and I'll, I'll, I'll find out, I'll have, um, Mrs. Dixie send something out to let us know what, what to expect, thank you.
What time, can you refresh my, what time is that meeting, is it seven?
I'm pretty certain it's seven.
Thank you.
It's at the Wildwood.
Thank you.
Mr. Regera, if you, can you re- refresh me, I, my recollection is that all, of all four of the proposals that were put forth for reconfiguring the schools, that they all involve consolidation, but was that, is that not the, I mean, I guess there was one, I guess there maybe was one that was status quo, but I guess anything that was changing, um, my recollection was they all involve, you know, closing the, closing the Boutwell and the, and the Wildwood in general.
Just happened to have something right here.
This one?
So, there was a, you know, uh, the one scenario was targeted improvements, I think that was what, um, this new house was talking about, kind of doing nothing, if you will, just upkeeping, and I don't know if we had costs on those, and then there was a scenario, um, existing schools improved to meet current space standards, so during this process, and again, it ends up being a roadmap, the consultant, the town, um, hired to do this, did look at, just looking at the existing schools and how do you make the educational spaces more appropriate? Then there were four kind of scenarios, if you will, um, one was to go to four elementary schools, and in this scenario was the Boutwell was being closed and the Woburn Street was being closed, and you had, um, create four schools of relatively equal size, all housing pre-K through five, uh, the extent of modifications is determined in, on the existing conditions of each remaining school, so that was a scenario. Another one was one pre-K K kindergarten and three elementary schools. Modify an existing school to create a single pre-K to K school, create three schools of relatively equal size, all housing grade one through five. The next scenario was one pre-K to K school, three K to five elementary schools, and the previous one in, the one I'm talking about right now, had the Boutwell being closed, Wildwood closed, but rebuilding something on that site, and Shawshene being closed in that scenario. And then, uh, scenario six, and this was the two pre-K to two schools, two grade three to five schools, and that was to repurpose essentially the Wildwood and Boutwell, renovate the north and the west, move a grade up, renovate in addition, renovate in addition Woburn Street and, um, Shawshene, then remove the pre-K and K up. So essentially, in this scenario, again, as a blueprint, you do the north and the west, you renovate, expand, move the third grade up.
Third grade goes up to the intermediate schools.
Exactly, then you renovate, expand, um, the Woburn Street and Shawshene, at that time, you'd move pre-K and K up, and now you'd have the Boutwell and Wildwood, um, vacant, if you will, and the town would decide or whomever would decide how to repurpose or what to do with those, so those are kind of the, what was laid out initially, and that last one was what was approved kind of by the, um, Facility Master Planning Committee and the School Committee back, you know, a few, couple of years ago.
Right, so, so in, so in those final four scenarios, they all involve closing some buildings and expansion of others to absorb the students, so, you know, obviously, if you're, you know, those students have to go somewhere, and there's not currently a space for them. So it's like in, in, even in any of those possibilities, there's going to have to be, if we pursue consolidation at all, there has to be renovation and expansion of some of the other schools, um, in order to absorb the students, so whether we build a new building or not, there, there has to be, you know, if, if that, if that consolidation is a goal, which I think it still should be, um, for not just the, you know, financial ultimate reasons, but, uh, for, you know, for educational reasons, um, that, that has to be part of, part of what we're seeking.
It's my, it's my understanding that we're not held to what we, what was chosen back then, that's not, we're not trying to convince them that there's something, we're just trying to see what makes the most sense moving forward, that we don't have to worry so much about changing this plan, it's sort of, this is what was there at the time, but I don't think we're, we're held to that.
I think of what drove plans, John Benton was the one, was the, uh, person who came up with Plan Si- um, Six, and it was directly, because we had many years of, um, kind of sinking fourth grade grades in MCAS and such, a lot of it's transition, and it, one of the biggest complaints with the community and parents have been the number of transitions that go on in this community, um, and fiscally, if you think about it, if we consolidated, it, it, it would save the town money because it, as opposed to taking care of two independent structures, you have one, so I think there's a cost savings and, um, in the structure and just utilities, ongoing utilities, I think my, it'd be safe to say that my ongoing concerns right now is the incurred cost that we would be, um, seeing in the near future in order for us to be just able to operate this support, student support. I was, you know, I, I was there recently with Dr. Brand, and, uh, first of all, I, I don't think it, it's an appropriate work environment in, in any, um, if you get airflow through that because of all the cubicles, it's a surprise, um, I, I'm concerned with that, especially with, when it's subtropical in January in there as well because of the heating system, it is what it is, you know, but the other concern is that, again, speaking to Mrs. Newhouse's point, um, that there's no privacy, and what was once a conference room at the Wildwood is now an OT room, um, so I don't even know where, uh, administrators go to meet unless it's after school because I, or it's at cafeteria, um, but it's, um, I, I think we're, you know, it is a serious situation that we may, I would, I would be, not be surprised if we would need to act upon it, um, while these, these discussions go on. Um, and I, and I, I would love to keep these discussions open with the selectmen and the, uh, finance committee, because I think it's important, um, that we, we do talk about, I think we're, we're meeting, knowing that any, anything that we go with, you know, we've talked about it, and it was discussed at, um, at the beginning of when this was, um, finalized, is that this is a project over the next 25 years, well, we don't have that with, especially our, the Wildwood school right now, you know, and with anything we do apply for, you got to add eight years from, you know, uh, thought to completion, and in that timeframe, too, education is shifting and moving and, you know, it's, it's kind of a, you've got a tough job, a slippery slope, so, you know, but thank you for the time.
Okay, I'm going to move us on if that's okay, all right. Um, strategic plan, 2019 to 2022, Dr. Brand.
Okay, uh, this evening is intended to be, uh, really informational, but a return to the conversation and the plan that, uh, was last chaired around the table, a couple of months ago, but really only a couple of meetings ago, uh, at the, uh, at the end of last school year, so, uh, this is, there's full information that is in the School Committee packet, and I certainly can, um, assure you that I will be working to get this out to our community in different, um, in, in different ways in the short next period of time. But, uh, you know, the, the, I think the really excited, there's lots of exciting things about this plan, uh, but it is, uh, you're talking about moving forward, thinking ahead, um, looking for improvements, and I, I, I love this quote as it, um, talks about, um, you know, the, the route to success and where we're going for us, for the Wilmington Public Schools. So, uh, this really brings together the pieces, uh, for, uh, the district and, uh, where we are going, not just, um, not just action steps and things to check off on a box like figuring out our start times, but more specifically, really providing a coherence for our school district and, and bringing it together, specifically over the next three years. I can't help again but to take the opportunity every step of the way to highlight the, the work and contributions of so many people that were responsible ultimately for this plan, I, I, you've seen them before, um, and, uh, again, just so many folks that came around the tables in this very room on many occasions, uh, last year to help in, uh, in this work. It, uh, it was a, it was a process that was thoughtfully guided, uh, we had the benefit of having a fantastic facilitator who helped lead us through, in fact, the model the Department of Education is suggesting for school districts, so we should, and the community should feel confident that we are in a good place in terms of the final product and the kind of as, elements, if you will, that are incorporated into, into our plan. Uh, there was efforts, you'll recall, of outreach to gather information from our stakeholders, not just those people that were in this room working on this plan, but certainly, um, multiple opportunities throughout our community and through our staff and students to gather information. And so it led to, as you'll recall, uh, and, um, the, this plan, I just remind our community members, uh, has been approved by this school committee, and that's a, that's a great thing and a great accomplishment for, uh, for all of us that I think we should be proud of. Uh, tonight is really to take stock of where we're going specifically with the next action steps, we have a new mission statement, again, you've seen all of this before, um, but we're working to try and, um, bring, you know, highlight to this and prominence as we, we, um, convey this, uh, and get this out to our community. We have, uh, we have a new vision, um, that has been cultivated again through the efforts and contributions of those and the feedback that was gathered through the process, and you can see that here, uh, we have a new, uh, a new set of values, and, um, this replaces our previous values and our previous mission, and, um, uh, the Wildcats Circle of Values, I think, just has great opportunity to really, um, to, to really coalesce around what we are as a school district going forward. We have a theory of action that we maybe haven't or I haven't perhaps talked enough about, but as part of this process and through the, uh, support of our consultant, really took stock of strategic planning in the sense of, um, based upon what people had heard and what the feedback was, if we do certain things, then we will hopefully achieve a certain end, and I think that, that, um, uh, this is just important to take note of as well, too, that this, you know, that this is, we're really the heart of where we're going, and if we do these things, if we seek as a school system to promote academic success for all students, to foster the well-being of each child, to promote an inclusive collaborative school and community and improve our school facilities, uh, which we were, of course, just talking about, then we will have the best very bet to develop students who are academically, socially, emotionally prepared, uh, to move on to the society before them, and so I think that that's an important, uh, foundation around which this, this plan is built. There are four objectives you'll, you'll recall, student learning is number one, social emotional learning, two, culture of inclusion, three, and learning environment, four, um, and, uh, uh, these are, are further broken down into, uh, so each objective has a number of initiatives, uh, the, um, the initiatives, I'll, I'll point out, um, this is all work that came from the larger group that was working together collaboratively on the development of the plan, there's been some fine tuning, uh, certainly to be, to be fair, as we've had a chance to scrub it and, and carefully review it, but the initiatives and the objectives remain consistent from the work and the efforts of the, um, of the committee, a lot of words here, I won't, I won't take the time to read each one, but, um, but I think that it's important. Objective one is certainly heavier in terms of initiatives, but I think quite appropriately so, this is about student learning. We have our work cut out for us, but these things represent calls to action based upon the feedback that was gathered through the process, and I think that that's important. Any single one of these things are here, um, not because somebody thought that it was a good idea in and of itself, but because collectively the feedback kept pointing to the need, for example, for us to work on aligning our curriculum, for us to work on technology and integration and what that means to support teaching and learning in the Wilmington Public Schools. Uh, objective two, again, uh, has its own bank of, of initiatives that follows course and, and working to strive towards improving the work that we do around social emotional learning, again, lots of, uh, lots of, uh, concepts here, I won't go over all of them, but, uh, you can see 2.5 school start times as an example, um, that, uh, that we were speaking of earlier, professional development is a cornerstone, obviously, of this work. Uh, objective three, culture of inclusion, there are a number of initiatives as well, uh, that, that go ahead to complement the work here and will help, um, help us make, uh, uh, ends towards improvement, learning environment, building relationships, partnerships, um, certainly the focal point for this one, and objective four, learning environments, uh, this is, again, along the lines of facility, but it's more than facilities, uh, it's, it's technology as well, too, um, but it's also, you know, the, the facilities in our discussion previous were really, for the most part, uh, around, uh, you know, around the walls and the buildings and the, the, the classroom, classroom physical space, there's a deeper level to thinking about what it means to support teaching and learning in these times around flexible spaces, flexible furniture, how do you best accommodate that? That seems to me like we have a whole host of opportunities to further explore and that maybe in recent times as a district, we, we haven't, uh, you know, the things that are, we, we see in some workplaces, like stand-up desks and different chairs that might be a better fit for learners, all of those things are part of learning environments that, um, not surprisingly, many districts don't often take the time to think about, but I think we have an opportunity to do so. This is, uh, I know it's, apologies, a little bit hard to see maybe on the screen, but, you know, this, this comes together and I, I believe that it's my job on behalf of the School Committee to really help realize this map and to make sure that the concepts, the ideas, the priorities, uh, and everything else in between has a tight fit with our evaluation system, with our budgets, uh, with our priorities, our individual action plans at the school level, as well as obviously the district level, um, and seeking ways to fit these pieces of the puzzle together will be essential if we're, um, if we're seeking the coherence that I think we, we want as we move this plan forward. It, uh, I, I shared this with staff on opening day because I think this to me really, uh, is a highlight of, of where we need to go with this plan this year and in the years that follow, um, and I, I can't stress this enough, and I'm finding myself doing so when I have the chance to talk to people, and for members of the community, I think should know this, this is our plan collectively, it's not, it's not my plan, it's not the school committee's plan, I believe it's our plan, and through the process that we went through, uh, it speaks to- plan and through the process that we went through, uh, it speaks to that. This came through, uh, the contributions of so many stakeholders. It is, um, uh, it is at the heart of obviously supporting the well-being of our students. Uh, there are partnerships through and through that are sought to be, uh, improved and to, to be, um, fostered and obviously that is a win-win for everybody going forward. And it still allows for innovation and creativity and I think that that's an important piece that, uh, we as educational leaders in the district need to foster and make sure that staff know. And it, it, it is our plan, you've embraced it, uh, you've taken action to support it. And so, uh, we need to make sure that people are accountable for this and that we, we work together towards the ends, uh, of what we think are most important. My job here, I talked a little bit about it, but, um, I think that it becomes, it becomes incumbent upon us as educational leaders and obviously myself as your superintendent to make sure that this is not just a plan on a shelf that so often happens in so many districts, uh, ones that I've worked in, probably in organizations too. It has to have meaning, it has to have life. Uh, it certainly, um, also directs us towards realizing that we have limited resources. We were talking about those earlier. Um, and that it sometimes may meeting, uh, may mean saying no to great and innovative ideas. We only have so many funds to go, uh, to go around, uh, to keep us focused on track, um, obviously, and, um, making sure that we are cognizant of taking on too much at once, because when we do that, that doesn't lead to, uh, good ends. And obviously, uh, a process of making sure that the committee here as a whole in the community, um, knows, uh, what, what the work is. We have collective values, uh, we need to think about how those roll out into our schools, whether it be at the second grade level or the, the 12th grade level and what does that mean to embrace these. This mission and vision has to have meaning and it should guide the work and our decisions, uh, as we, as we move forward. And that can be in the classroom level, that can be at a building level, and it can be certainly at the district level. This may require revision, this is a best laid plan, but like all plans, sometimes things might not roll out exactly like we had hoped. And so it may require some revision along the way. Um, that this may lead to some failure, but I think that that's okay and I think that my job is also to let staff know that we need to think thoughtfully through things, try, and if they don't work, figure out a way to try again better. Um, and obviously, uh, bringing meaning into the classroom. So, um, that's in, in a small, medium-sized nutshell, the, the plan, it's, um, there's obviously a lot more to it. I will bring attention to the committee, I didn't, because of the, the, uh, volume of words, put it onto a slide, but in the packet, um, you will see the, uh, I'll call it the grid that has the overview of action steps for each of the objectives. This is on our website now, I didn't mention at the outset, um, these, these, uh, these plans, thanks to Ms. Dixie, um, and Ms. Wolpe have worked to put this onto our website. But there is a document in here, um, Action Steps 2019-2020. And so I said earlier that the, uh, the, you saw the, you saw the strategic objectives, the four of them, and you saw the specific initiatives back in the spring. We have the one piece that, um, I say we, I, my, my, uh, the administrative team, my, my colleagues have worked to fine tune the action steps. And it's been a lot of thinking and a lot of hours spent with the district leadership team and the extended leadership team over the summer to figure out what makes the most sense from an action step standpoint to help realize the initiative. And so this, uh, again, I know it's, it's busy, there's a lot of content here and there are a lot of action steps to be sure, but, um, the 2019-2020 version highlights the action steps that, that if we're going to hit our mark, will unfold or start, begin, what have you, over the course of this school year. There are other action steps that are, um, for the, for two years from now and then for three years from now respectively, but, um, th- this is an effort to try and, uh, keep me on track, keep us on track, but also to hone in on exactly what we need to do. Um, and, and again, there's a lot here, I won't go through each piece, but, um, I think it's thoughtfully laid out, it, uh, it certainly has an awful lot of shared ownership and leadership. Those of us around the table and many who are not here, um, it's ambitious work, but it's work that, um, that we think and that I think will be a key piece to helping lead towards realizing our initiatives or achieving our initiatives, which in turn should help achieve the overall objective that we are seeking. So, um, the last piece in your packet, it's not, uh, I didn't highlight it here, but the, uh, the flyer, um, uh, thank, many thanks to Tristan who worked very hard to put this together. Uh, and this is a, as you'll see, it's a two-page flyer that provides a, you know, 20,000-foot view, uh, of the plan. Uh, my thinking, we, we actually, Tristan and I talked today about, um, enlarging this, making sure that this gets into our prominent, you know, our school offices, uh, a flyer that can be for things like open houses, back-to-school nights, the town, um, uh, Welcome to Town for Newcomer, I forget what the exact title is, those kind of things. And this, this obviously has to become an important piece of publicizing this and making sure people are aware of what it is that we're about and where we're going. So, um, with that, again, it's meant for information, but I'm happy to take any feedback or questions you might have.
I just have to say, I love the flyer, I think this is great and I'm, I'm glad you're utilizing it to, at these upcoming events and open houses, because I think it's, um, I think it's important to push because I, as you said, I think, um, it's easy forgotten that with the school, the strategic plan, it does, it is ours collectively as a community and not just the school's focus. We all have a ownership to it and, um, I wanna thank all the members of the strategic plan and, um, the administration, um, for the concise and, uh, approach to the, the actions and the benchmarks, objectives. Um, I've been reading and I, I was a little overwhelmed, I'm like, God bless you all for trying to, it, there's a lot of moving facets, but, um, nice work.
Agreed, Ms. Burns, I think that the, the work that's been done so far is, is really promising and, uh, really shows that, um, you know, you can write down these lofty goals, but when it comes down to what are teachers actually going to be doing that's different, that's going to, you know, what is this gonna look like when it's actually in front of students? Um, then, you know, you just need to get down to this granular level at the action steps and there's been a lot of really thoughtful work, um, that's, uh, that's been done here. And I also appreciate the, the effort you're, that, that you've identified to continually bring this in front of the staff and to make this, uh, a priority in the district that everyone understands that like, you know, these are, you know, this is what we're doing and you always have to be thinking about, uh, how we're, you're working on these four objectives. Um, because, just because you put some words down on paper and we raise, we all raise our hands, doesn't make anything happen. It's like, you know, it has to actually, um, come into, you know, real, real behavior and real, real action. Um, and, you know, not every, not every, uh, goal has the, the evidence of change benchmark. Um, again, the ongoing, there's a lot of ongoing development here, but, uh, those are also, I think, very, very helpful because when you start thinking about, well, if our, if our plan is working and if we're actually going to be achieving what we hope to achieve, how will we know? What, what will be different? What will we see? That also informs the action steps that you take, because when you think about, well, what are we gonna look for, you know, if it's based on an evaluation, we're gonna look in the classrooms and see if this is happening in most of the classrooms we visit, we also have to know as the evaluator, what is it that I'm supposed to be looking for? And it informs the way that you approach that task as well. So I think there's a lot of really thoughtful work, uh, so far and, um, it's, uh, very promising.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo, I'm very excited to see the, the chart and the benchmarks. I think it looks really intense. So as I was doing it, I was sort of keeping a note, it's like 2019, 2020, 2021, and I guess I'm wondering, is there another set where you're keeping track of like, what did we say we were gonna do first? What are we gonna do next? Just, it's a lot and I see Assistant Superintendent all over. So, I, so I think it's, I mean, what's wonderful and I think it's definitely doable, but it is very, very big and there's a lot in here. So, and for me to look through this, I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, is there another set of, here's our priority area, like this is what we're focusing on, so I see it in the dates.
Right.
But how are you, how will you keep track of all that?
That's why, I have, I have, yeah. I, I have a team. Spelled T-E-A-M. It's ambitious and there, there's no question about it.
But it's exciting and I think the work's great and I can't wait to, to see more updates, so, thank you. Anybody else? All right. We are way, way behind our timestamp here. I'm just kidding.
I, I know.
The timestamps really put me under pressure.
We were, we were doing well.
I feel like I failed the committee.
All right, uh, could you enlarge, Tristan, could you enlarge that, sorry? Tristan, sorry, could you put this on presentation? Uh, final item tonight, uh, from me, I sure think that's true. School committee, superintendent goal setting in your packet, uh, this is, um, coming back to you obviously for, uh, a second read and a follow-up from our conversation, uh, at the last meeting. Again, the context I think here is, is, is important in terms of, uh, goal setting around which one of your fundamental responsibilities is, of course, the evaluation of, of, of my performance as, as your superintendent. We talked last time around some recommendations from, uh, the newly revised rubric and, and system, if you will, that Desi has, um, uh, put out there for superintendents inclusive of one professional practice goal, one student learning goal, two to four district improvement goals, six to eight aligned indicator goals. I mentioned these at the, at our, at our last meeting and the pack, as the information, sorry, before you, provides, uh, a restatement of that with a little bit more information around outcome and indicator of success. Whoops, I went too fast for that, sorry. Um, so this is the school visits, um, that I mentioned before in terms of the effort from, my effort to broaden and deepen my understanding of the work throughout our, our, our system. Uh, the outcome here is, again, as I mentioned last time, is a better in, closer insight. Uh, school visits, those are the cornerstone, um, uh, of, of, of my work, those in, uh, those I kick off this week, um, and of course will be a regular part of my, uh, my day-to-day activity, but also making sure that I have a chance to get into and be a part of the, the meetings, um, that we have ongoing, I think will help greatly in terms of getting a much deeper handle on the work, um, that's unfolding across our district. Student learning goal. This is, uh, this is one of the strategic, um, action items that you might, uh, have noted, uh, the formation of the Action for Inclusion, Diversity and Equity Committee to review data and further explore our practices around inclusion and equity, and it's 3.1 specifically. Action steps, outcomes and success. So this is certainly one that I will, uh, share, uh, ownership of for sure, but, uh, it certainly is, is my responsibility to make sure that this unfolds. This is a priority area, as we think about that, uh, to the chair's earlier comment. Um, and, and, uh, this will be informed through such things as the CPR report, as you know, recently done, the Walker Report, which was, you'll recall, the study of our special education programs, which will be presented to the school committee in October. I'm not sure which date yet, one of the two, but definitely in October. Um, and you can see the outcomes here for this goal, uh, as it relates to our practices and our policies, our actions and such around really truly the support and inclusion of all students. And then you can see my suggestion for the indicator of success. Uh, there are a number of district improvement goals, district improvement goal one, we talked, actually, uh, to some extent about, of course, around, um, I think actually this was the agenda, the one that consumed the most time tonight, wouldn't you say? I think so. Right? Um, and, uh, the anticipated outcome and the indicators of success, uh, there, um, that I think are, are gonna be so critical for our, uh, for us moving forward, district improvement goal number two, uh, the superintendent's advisory council, uh, to help foster, facilitate two-way communication, um, across our district. Goal number two, the outcome, uh, I think will, will help greatly, hopefully in terms of tying in, um, awareness, uh, throughout, throughout our school system about the work that's ongoing. I think this is no more of an important time than any. And then, uh, uh, this will be one of those things, uh, where I'll make sure that, uh, the staff become informed about the kind of things that are going on through minutes and agendas and such. Goal number three, a report to the community, I spoke about this as well last time, highlights , uh, the school and district work, um, and you can see my suggested outcome and, again, is in the packet. Uh, the aligned indicator goals has not changed, um, since you last saw it last time around. Um, and I, I picked these, there's, there's lots that I could have picked, but, uh, these seem to have some, I, I felt some relevance, um, and that you could consider, uh, again, around my performance. And then finally, next steps in timeline here that we did not specifically talk about last time, um, but my hope is this evening that you will, uh, consider approving the goals that I've presented to you. Uh, these tie in with the currently planned meetings in the school committee calendar. Uh, again, this is for proposal, obviously, you can, uh, make adjustments as you might wish, but January 22nd, mid-year goal update, April 29th, end of cycle, final goal report. Um, and then I, I'm, I would suggest that you would start the, formally start the evaluation process then. With, uh, our, our last meeting date right now, uh, is June the 10th. We have another meeting, but only if necessary, so I, I tried to fit it into that and I felt like there was, be a reasonable amount of time from April 29th until whatever it has to be before then, but again, certainly, um, you could tweak or adjust that, this is just a suggestion. So, I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Mrs. Burns?
I actually have a question for Chair Bryson. If we started the superintendent evaluation process on April 29th, they'll be running into elections, because that may be the, um, elec, town elections. So, um, you know, this discussion came up.
Yeah, I don't, this is not, I think this was just a suggestion.
Okay.
We haven't, I, we haven't talked about this as a board. I don't think we need to make a decision right now.
I wouldn't suggest making a decision now, but...
I'm guessing what you're suggesting, Dr. Brand, is that you'd like us to do the evaluation after your final goal report.
Well, um, I think that, and I, if I remember, there were, that was also a point of some conversation in terms of, is it, is it fair to ask you to evaluate without me being able to report out? So, so I, I, I am suggesting I would do the end of cycle, final goal report a little bit earlier than I did last year. Doing it much earlier than that is, it's, it's, it's possible, of course, but, yeah.
So I mean, I think I've just proposed that maybe at the Jan, the mid-year goal update, we decide then.
Yep.
If we were gonna start the process sooner, we'd probably start March and finish up before the election, but if we decide at that point, if it looks as though too many of those pieces won't be, we won't have evidence until later, then maybe as a board we decide to wait until, until after the election and, and so be it.
Clarify after me, did, did we not discuss this and vote on it previously? I mean, I think we need to be flexible, I have no problem with that, but I thought we were...
I don't think we ever took a vote, I think we decided last time.
We're chatting, okay.
To do it prior, but I think that, because, I mean, I, I don't, I'm just, the goals were different and so, I think it was, but I think having been through that process, this might make more sense, but I don't, I'm not committed to that. I think we, I think we wait till, I think we wait till January and see, but what do, what do others think?
I just wanna, you know, ensure what information.
Sure.
If we do try to do it prior to the town elections, I just wanna make sure, giving, um, Dr. Brand that ample opportunity to, uh, you know, um, the update as to where he is on those goals.
No, I agree.
Um, and maybe we can take in, I don't know, I would take into consideration to the, um, um, projectory as to when those will be completed, because I think by that juncture too, even spring, he may, depending upon it, have a better idea as to, but, you know, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to revisit it at the January meeting.
That's, okay. Okay. Thank you, that's a good point, but I thought the same thing, I was like, ooh, wait, did we decide on that? I think it's just, we'll have to see when we get there.
Yep.
Um, and you don't need us to do, oh, you do need us to do something.
I do.
That was just for information?
Yes.
No, I'm kidding. Um, so there is a motion, is our motion listed here? But we do need to make a motion to approve, Mr. Raxdale? Are you gonna make that motion?
I'll make a motion if you like.
Make the motion, please.
All right, uh, I move, uh, that the committee approves Dr. Brand's goals for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Oh, so many hands, I won't choose. Mr. Smaha, I think I saw yours first. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, that was very helpful, I think. Good additions. Um, okay. We have first reading of policy GCS. This is the posting of collective bargaining agreements and the superintendent of Schools' employment contract that we had discussed last year. And so you will have read, here it is, and this should be the last piece in your folders. Questions, comments?
This is the first I've seen, yes. So, I guess, I guess my, my question would be that the, the, the bargaining unit, so like would it, would, are you, would this be, um...
like would it, would, are you, would this be, like, is it the, through the entire, like, CBA, the whole?
I'm sorry, you haven't...
I don't, I don't know, I just got this tonight and I don't know anything about it.
I apologize.
Which is, which is okay, but I mean, is that what it is, it's posting the, the whole thing?
Yeah.
Online?
Yes, and do we want to provide, is there any history here that we want to provide?
I, I can certainly, Mr. Rajur, if you want, so this came out, right, this came out of the request by the town selectman.
Finance committee.
I'm sorry, Finance Committee. And it is indeed the case that some, some districts do do this, I don't know how many, but certainly it's not terribly uncommon to build a fine, the full, so it would be the full, to your question, the full collective bargaining agreement as ratified. And then in addition to that, the superintendent's contract, you know, redacted with any personal information, but also would be posted as well.
What is it, like, guess the purpose of it? Is it just in purpose of like transparency, is that the idea?
Just to make the district's most important educational contracts easily available to the public.
And we did determine that the town managers was also...
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, but yes.
The town managers' contract was public, so there became a discussion as to, should this be public as well? Other, some, it's sort of all over the place, some districts have them public, some don't. And so, we decided, well, why don't we make any decisions, but we drafted this, or Mr. Rajur drafted this to help us think through, is this something that we would like to do following the request by the Finance Committee?
Actually, I just made a back, I'm sorry, you actually did make a decision as a body to, to follow. This just enacts or, or puts into place the decision that you did make and that is to post both of these items, the contracts and the superintendent's contract.
That was prior to the election.
It was prior, yeah.
So...
They're like, what is happening here?
I remember hearing something about it, but not being part of the conversation, so that makes sense.
We never did it, and now it rolls over. So, it's almost like we're seeing it. Some of us are seeing it for the first time.
Right, because we didn't...
Very sorry, I didn't...
Sorry, so we, yes, we had made a decision last, before the election to do this. But then we didn't, it wasn't drafted, the election happened, new people came, and so now here it is. And so, but now it's a new committee, so we are going to do a, a first reading. And then we'll not vote on it tonight, but then we'll, if there's any questions or anything else you want to think about, we can, we'll come back and do a second reading. And I think I'd like to just not vote tonight, because I think it is the first time they're seeing it, and I don't want to get into that habit of voting on things when really we should do a second reading anyway.
So, can I ask then to clarify, these are not currently posted on the website?
That's correct.
Right, so, the committee, the most recent version of the committee decided to do this, drafted a policy, but it didn't come before us until today?
We didn't, there wasn't, the policy subcommittee was not active last year. So, that was also part of the thinking is to wait and, and so, that's also the timeline here.
Okay.
I can understand why you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just additional clarification, we've always posted the teachers' contracts online and as Mrs. Bryson said, that we, we had inquiry for other collective bargaining units and the superintendent as well, which makes sense financially as to what the school committee is negating. But Dr. Brand did point out prior to the election too, that we had that discussion as a board and that it may benefit us to have that structure, the policy in place prior to the posting so that we, we stay within, we don't create any, you know, unnecessarily. So, I think it was a good approach to it.
So, sorry that there was not enough background on this, because we were all under the impression that we had discussed this in here.
I apologize.
And I don't, are the, are they posted, the teachers' contracts? So, after this, they will be.
Were they, they were online previously?
So, this is very new for us. Okay, so that's the first read, we do nothing, and then we'll come back and look at it again next time. If you have other questions, please send them to Dr. Brand ahead of time. Okay? Public comment? Seeing none. Other reports, any subcommittee reports? I'll just quickly report, we're moving right along in the policy subcommittee, so at the next, this is the, one of the first ones you'll, you've seen, but there'll be quite a few next time for you to, to review. And we are, we're chugging right along, so thank you very much, Mr. Ragsdale. And, and the committee just made...
Thank yourself.
So, I feel good about that work. Correspondence? Okay, and then just some future school committee dates, we have, our next meeting is September 25th, and then not on here is that September 30th, so please add that to your calendars. That will be at the Wildwood at 7:00 PM, and I'm going to investigate whether or not there'll be a packet sent ahead of time, so I'll let you know this week. October 9th is our first October meeting, and then you'll just see some upcoming district events here. We have the Wildwood Open House on the 12th, along with the West Intermediate. We have Shaw Sheen Open House on the 19th, along with the North Intermediate, and then there's an early dismissal day on September 25th.
Can I just make a plug for an upcoming event?
Sure.
Sorry if I'm stepping on David's toes, but the CPAC is having its first meeting on the 19th at 7:00, and I know they're very actively looking for members, I think they may be down to two members. So, if there's anyone out there interested, it's here at the high school, I believe, in the library at 7:00 on the 19th.
So, that's the same night as, but those should be almost over, the North Intermediate ends at 7:30, so, okay. Is there any information that we could send, that gets sent out to, I'm assuming it goes through...
They'll be posting an agenda earlier that week, so I'm assuming, I don't know when that'll get posted, but it'll be posted at Town Hall as our agendas are, so.
Okay.
I'm sure we can share it once it's posted.
A little push to encourage people.
Yeah, I just think it's, we're, there are a subcommittee of us, it would be nice if we could help them, because two members, it's hard to do much.
So, tell your friends. Okay, anything else? All right, so a final motion to adjourn? Anybody? Anybody? Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thanks, everybody.